Order the August twenty one, two thousand twenty four South Borough zoning board of appeals. Uh, this meeting is live and also virtual. Um, I don't have the thing to read, but anybody who needs to, um, anybody who wishes to, uh, um, uh, participate, uh, virtually can do so through the, uh, town of South Borough website. So on the agenda tonight, the first hearing we've got is not until seven fifteen. So until then, uh, we have some administrative things we want to take care of first. Uh, at the moment, uh, there's three of us here in person. Uh, Mike Robbins is dialed in, uh, virtually. We do have two others who were are planning to attend. Uh, we know, uh, Doug could be a little bit late and, uh, with Paul DePranos, um, we, quite honestly, we're never quite sure what kind of connections he's going to get. So, uh, we do expect to have a little bit more participation, um, as we proceed. So first item we want to talk about, oh, the, the, the minutes from the, from the previous meeting. They were fairly long, uh, hopefully if you had a chance to look at them as long as they were, uh, and you as well, Mike. So first of all, I'll just ask, does anybody have any, any corrections, any concerns regarding the minutes as presented by, uh, Laura?
I just found one typographical.
Okay.
Um, it's in the first paragraph or so, it says one point seven parking spaces per unit. Drop the E after unit.
Done.
Okay.
Night.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's my, that's my.
That was it? Okay. All right. Proof that she thought they were read. Great.
I read it.
Jamie?
I don't have any proof that I read it, but I did, and I didn't have any complaint.
Okay, very good. Mike, any, uh, any, uh, concerns?
No.
Okay, in that case, uh, we will, we will take a, a motion to approve the minutes as written with the correction as noted.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections as noted.
Second.
All right, motion to approve has been made and seconded, all in favor, respond with aye, oppose nay, Doris?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Williams, aye? Okay, that proves the minutes for July thirty first. Um, I think the only other administrative things we had are scheduling next meetings. So I don't know, do, did, did you have any, um? You know what you might have in front of you. Did you have suggestions or where, why don't, why don't you start us off?
So our next regularly scheduled meeting is currently September eighteenth. I know Jamie has a conflict with that. Um, we are expecting one special permit application probably by the next week. Um, but that would be for October. Um, so other than that, it's just the forty B projects. But because we've had several members miss one hearing and use the Mullins rule for those, I want to make sure that we're cautious about scheduling to ensure that we have a full board to vote.
Yeah, I have a conflict with both the September and October regularly scheduled meetings.
Okay. Um, so looking at those months, strictly looking at the Wednesdays, because that's typically what we have, what, what, maybe just tell us what weeks work for you. I think you already explained why you have the conflict, so.
Um.
We have a meeting the fourth, I'm just.
We do, the meeting on the.
Yeah.
That.
We do have that for Park Central.
That's Park Central. Is that, that's the only thing we have on the agenda?
That's it.
That's it, okay.
So I am available, uh, I'm sorry, September twenty fifth. Um, oops.
Just a note that I am out of the country September twentieth to the twenty.
Okay. Um, does it need to be a Wednesday?
I don't think it, I don't think it has to be.
Something has to be, as long as we can get a room.
As long as we can find a room.
Because I can do the Tuesday before the seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
I'm open. I don't know about other.
That's, um, I could probably not even do that remotely on the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay.
No, I'm, I'm definitely in an airport at the meeting time.
What, what, Laura, when you have the twentieth to the?
The twentieth to the twenty seventh, like, or twenty eighth, that Friday to Friday.
Um, I can do October first or third, which is a Tuesday or Thursday.
I can do October third. Does that mean we're not going to meet?
I don't know, could you do this, just the special permit on the twenty first? And then if we have to do the two fifty and one twenty is a separate.
Hearing, talking about the eighteenth, right?
Yeah, sorry, the eighteen.
Yeah, we, well, the special permit will be for October.
Oh.
They're filing by the September.
Okay.
So that'll be on the agenda for October.
Oh, so we're only going to have?
So if you're looking at September, it'll only be forty Bs?
Oh, okay.
Um.
Do we have something scheduled on the eighteenth of September for forty B?
Currently, no.
So we have nothing on the eighteenth?
It's just.
That's just our regular meeting, but we don't have any regular.
Right, nothing, no notices have gone out for that.
Correct.
Okay, so it's only a reserved room at this point.
If I remembered, Doug could do the eighteenth. But if it's a forty B, we're all starting to leak into the Mullin rule on different applications, right?
And Doug just joined us as well.
Just joined us?
Yep.
Excellent. Doug, welcome to the meeting.
Well, to answer that, October third's fine, and that means we're not going to have the meeting on the eighteenth?
That's up to you guys. I think it's good to discuss available dates now, because we also need to fill some time. But we can't actually admit to anything until you guys vote on continuing for the public hearings.
I can take, uh, a date of the third. It's hard on the eighteenth, but I can make that too, hopefully.
Okay.
But the, the eighteenth is a, is not good for you, James, that way.
That was the.
Correct.
And it's tough for Doug. Doug, wasn't the eighteenth an issue for you?
Of September?
Yep, like it's tight.
Uh, I can, I can make the, I can make the eighteenth work of September.
I can do it remotely. They're just, we're just discussing it. I can do it remotely. Granted, I have a remote connection, which I should, but.
All right, but, but again, Jamie, Jamie's not.
Available at all.
Nope.
For the eighteenth, so.
Okay, so that's.
So then we're looking at October one or three?
I guess these are just dates we're deciding now that we may have to choose when we hear from the attorneys.
Right.
Um, October one's a no for me, okay?
Okay.
It's a, just saying, I, I know I couldn't make it.
Mike, do you have any, any, uh, any conflicts?
No, I really don't, so I can be as flexible if we need people. Um, depending on what the motion is, depending, you know, how many people we need, but yeah, no. Um, both I and Jen will be back in September, so.
Okay, so just thinking through the Mullins rules that we have on file. Um, if we needed to do September eighteenth, I would recommend we don't do anything related to two fifty turnpike, because both of you have done the Mullins rule, Doris and Jamie.
Right.
Um, so I would say nothing related to two fifty turnpike on that day. We could do one twenty, because you guys have not, I think Mike is the only one who's done a Mullins rule for one twenty.
Okay.
So, uh, Doug, if we do the eighteenth, then one, little twenty would not be good hearing. So we said once.
Two fifty would not be a good.
Two fifty is not good, because I have the Mullins rule, but one twenty, I think I've only missed the one meeting in three years, so that, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. You have all that.
I know this is thrilling stuff for all of you.
Yeah.
So we have it in our heads now.
Yeah.
Well.
Just to give you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've got it.
Some option.
You, you.
We've got it in here.
Maybe.
And then other options for me, I can do October tenth, that's a Thursday. Um, I could do October eighth, that's a Tuesday.
I have, I mean, I have a potential, I have a potential business trip, but nothing is firm yet, so it's pretty hard to.
And then October fourteenth, it's a Monday, but I could do that too. Uh, that's Columbus Day, I think, so everything's pretty close.
Yes.
I'm very open. I have a lot of things through October, but nothing that would prevent me from taking an evening meeting remotely or. It's as of today. Uh, so I'm pretty open October to be flexible.
And then late October, I won't really know. Um, until the week or two before, so.
Oh, and Paul did tell me that he will make whatever dates we decide work, so.
From some place without why.
Somewhere, somehow.
Yeah. Or, or yes.
Does anybody besides Jamie have a conflict with October sixteenth?
Okay. I don't think it's a problem for me. I mean, that. The week, the week, so the week where we had, we were talking about the third.
Yeah, I'm available.
Is, is.
Okay.
Is potentially, and potentially a problem for me, I can't really be certain. But I don't think that, I don't think October eighth or October tenth would be a problem. Fortunately, it's.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah, right now I'm good for anything in October. I don't have any conflicts. I can see those dates referenced.
Excellent, thank you. Almost there. Got like a minute and a half.
Okay, seven fifteen, so we can move on to nice, next item on our agenda is two fifty Turnpike Road. Uh, Attorney Charville, do you have anything, any updates for us on two fifty?
Yes, Mr. Chair, again, Brian Charville here for the applicant, along with my co-counsel Lou Levine and George Bonan, uh, here on behalf of FD two fifty, the applicant. Um, we kicked off this public hearing, I think, on June twenty sixth, and so this is the second instance of it. And in the time since we, I, we have done what we said we would, in the sense that, I think it was the third week of July, we had a very, very productive meeting with abutters and their counsel at our offices to review a new layout, which, uh, has a town homes approach, as discussed. So the current plan is thirty-two town homes across the site. Um, further to that, very productive meeting and the feedback that the abutters provided, uh, our engineer has been coming up with a full site plan set. And I'd say we're within a couple of weeks of that being finished, along with the things you've seen on other sites, so, uh, drainage plans, septic system design, those sorts of things. And our plan is to get that in so that your peer review can dive in. And so, um, thinking ahead, knowing that we need a couple more weeks to get the site plan set in and related documents, and then for peer review to occur. I'm tempted to suggest that this be taken up again at the board's regular meeting. And I think it's October sixteenth, which would be probably eight weeks from today.
Okay, all right, not.
Just a thought.
Okay.
And then just one more thing about our conversations with the abutters. Um, what we're headed toward at the abutters council's suggestion is a, um, a term sheet and then a memorandum of understanding between the applicant and the abutters, reflecting things we've talked about in the, the cooperation going forward on the design and other matters. So we're very, very enthused by how that's gone so far.
Okay, sorry, just to repeat, you're, you've been meeting with them and you're working on a memorandum of understanding, is that, that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. But, uh, in fairness, I'm sure the first thing they would say is they correctly said, you know, the most important thing to them is seeing that full site plan set, which everybody will see in the next couple of weeks, including them.
Excuse, excuse me, sorry to jump in, but if you could speak more directly into the microphone, I'm just having a little bit hard time hearing you remotely, and thank you.
Thank you. Is that better?
Oh, much better, thank you.
Those couple inches make a difference.
Okay, did you have anything more to add to that, or?
I would just add, uh, one more thing. At that kickoff hearing on June twenty sixth, uh, town council suggested that we brief a couple of questions that were more legal than anything in nature. And Attorney Levine put together that memorandum and sent it into county, town council, and I know it's, you know, been reviewed.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, well, again, like, that, like, I think I speak for the board when I say, you know, I think that's the right way to go about it. You know, I like the approach of sitting down with the abutters to work something out, so we, we do appreciate that. Um, but I, I think what we really want to get to here is an agreeable date to continue the hearing till, right? And, you know, what we were just discussing, um, ooh, you said, you said, you, you think the sixteenth at the earliest, basically?
Um, in fairness, th- thinking that the next meeting would benefit from both our design being finished and peer review having plenty of time to come in.
Okay.
Yes, and, and I was thinking, I mentioned the sixteenth only because I know that is the scheduled October hearing date, or meeting date for the sport.
Okay. Um.
So I can't do the sixteen, and unfortunately, the end of October, my, my daughter plays high school sports, and we won't know till a day or two before, it'll be like playoff season. So it'll be hard for me to commit to a date.
When, when, when does that, when does it start, the last couple of weeks?
It's the last couple of weeks and usually like the first week in November.
Usually in, I don't know what sport.
Field hockey.
Usually it's, the season ends at the end of October, and then playoffs begin.
Yeah, so, well, yeah, it's, C Mass does this thing where they do like a tournament the last two weeks of October. So you do, it's similar to playoffs, it's not playoffs, but it's similar. So I just can't commit, is all.
If, if the board would be open to a special meeting, I think that, uh, probably October ninth would be the same, or perhaps even the second.
Okay, that's.
Uh, because I, I know we'll be wrapped up by the end of.
Well, let's, 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 let's talk about the week of, um, let's see. We're there, we're talking about, we're talking about the eighth and the tenth, how did, how did those work out?
Yeah.
Doug, are those okay for you?
Either date's fine for me.
Yeah, both those dates work for me, the eighth and the tenth, I can do either of those.
Jamie, what, what was good, you, I thought.
It, those are good for me.
You said the, uh, eighth and the tenth.
Yeah.
For you, Mike? They're on mute.
Checking now, I, I think probably both will work. I'll, I'll chime back in if it's not, the eighth and the tenth?
The eighth and the tenth, yep. We would just have to find a room.
Yeah, eighth works. When is Columbus State, yeah, I, probably either work.
Columbus State's the fourteenth.
Yeah, but eighth would be better for me.
Eight, okay. It's still good.
I, yes, yeah, okay. Tuesday, October eighth, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, great, thank you, um. So I think that's just administratively, then we, we need to take a vote on continuing the hearing till October eighth at seven o'clock.
I make a motion to continue the hearing on October eighth at seven o'clock.
Second.
Okay.
Do we have to include the name of the, um?
Where are we on the, when did we open?
Project?
The hearing?
You said this, this one was June, right?
June twenty sixth, I believe.
Okay, so we'll be June, July.
Two fifty term.
August, September, so it'll be four months in? Yeah.
In terms of ex- extending the date?
Yeah, I mean, just. So it's three and that's halfway through, more than halfway through.
But we may have the f- full peer review feedback by then, possible.
So I will just need you guys to be open-minded at, at that point, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We never voted.
I know.
Yeah.
But we did have a motion, and we did have a second. So I'm going to take that, uh, motion to continue the hearing for two fifty Turnpike to October eighth at seven PM, all in favor, say aye, oppose nay, Doris?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And Williams, aye, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um.
Seven minutes to come.
Oh, okay, this is what happens when you set a schedule.
Laura?
Yes.
I thought my Mullins was on, was on the two fifty.
It is on the two fifty.
It's not on the Park Central.
Correct.
Okay. I keep that mind. We're being very efficient. Be very long, five minutes. About five minutes.
Uh, we could, we could do that, take a five-minute recess.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, and that, we'll, we'll be back at seven, uh, we'll be back at seven thirty. Thank you. All right, so we're back in session now, and we will, next item on the agenda is to continue the hearing for one twenty Turnpike Road. Again, Charville?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of staff, town council.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of staff, town council. I'm Brian Charville for the applicant, along with Hill Council, Melissa Bean, Doris Bonan. For the applicant, we have here tonight David Ferris in the audience, the principal of the applicant.
Again, if you could please speak into the microphone.
Thank you.
Yep.
And so, uh, the last instance of this hearing was on Wednesday, July thirty-first. The board will recall, a couple of days before that, we had filed the updated site plan sheets that were due. Those are with your peer reviewer at L D C. Um, just after the meeting on the thirty-first, we filed the drainage plans, uh, the drainage calculations. Couple of days ago, we filed the septic system design. So that's with your peer reviewer. Um, and last week, we filed the updated waivers list. On Monday, we spoke with, um, Wayne from L D C, your peer reviewer, and he gave feedback about the waivers list. And so we're in the midst and probably ninety-eight percent completion on reformatting the waivers list in the way that L D C likes to see it, which I think will be better for everybody because it requires a little more precision, like we've talked about at prior instances of this hearing, so that'll be good. So we didn't want to rush it in, in advance of tonight when we knew it would not be discussed, but it'll go in likely tomorrow and go to your peer reviewer to be included as part of their review. Um, so really, everything is in or very, very close on the waivers. And we heard from Wayne that his team is three to four days away from finishing their initial round of review after they get that complete waivers list. So we're, we're pretty close, or you're pretty close to having that first set of feedback from L D C, which is great. Um, that's the substance on the site plan and, and septic stormwater. Uh, I thought, Mr. Chair, it may be helpful, seeing that your traffic peer reviewer is here tonight, that maybe you hear again from him, Mr. Dirk. And I say that because you'll recall from the meeting three weeks ago that our, uh, traffic engineer, the applicant's traffic engineer was responding to Mr. Dirk's feedback and incorporating that. That has occurred and Mr. Dirk has weighed in with, I think, an updated memo to you all about his findings and that heading toward conclusion. So I, I'd welcome you all hearing from him. I don't know if now is a good time.
Yeah, I, I would say if we have, uh, something, something, uh, for peer review, that we should by all means discuss it.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessa Associates. Uh, we are the board's peer review consultant relative to traffic and transportation on the project. Um, so as the board may recall, we had issued an initial, uh, review letter in June, June third, uh, this year, uh, reviewing the applicant's transportation impact assessment that was filed for the project for the traffic impact study, as well as the site plans at the time, which had the project situated up on the hill um, to the south of the existing office building complex. And I think at the last hearing, the applicant had presented, um, revised plans or directions on revised plans to relocate the building. Uh, they had also submitted, uh, responses to our comments pertaining to the traffic impact study as well, which, as you may recall, the applicant was gonna go back and review those responses and then issue a subsequent revised response to our peer review comments. So that has since happened and they issued a letter uh, dated July twenty-sixth of this year, uh, responding to each of our comments. Um, just by way of a general overview of, of the, um, substance of our comments from the last hearing. Uh, there were really three primary areas as it relates to the analysis that we had asked them to look at. The first dealt with um, adjustments to the traffic volumes and adjustments on, uh, really two factors. Uh, one relating to the seasonality of traffic volumes. Um, the state requires or mass D O T requires uh, that we look at what's known as average month conditions. So average month conditions, just, um, in terms of months of the year during which average traffic conditions exist is generally, uh, eight, March, April. Um, and then in the fall, it's somewhere between October, September, late September, early October. During those time periods, traffic volumes in general are about what we consider average month conditions. Um, so we are required to at least look at average month conditions. Um, the applicant's engineer uh, conducted traffic counts that were above average, and so they chose to reduce those traffic volumes, average month conditions, which is not standard practice. Usually, if we're below average, we adjust upwards to average. If we're above average, we don't touch the volumes and that's considered existing conditions. Um, the second comment dealt with, uh, two things. It's, it was the, uh, adjustments related to impacts resulting from the COVID nineteen pandemic. So, um, we were applying adjustments to account for traffic volume fluctuations prior to twenty twenty-two. Uh, since twenty twenty-two, Mass D O T has issued guidance saying no more adjustments for COVID unless you're in a location where you have an office use, where we know office, uh, occupancies are extremely low. Um, so in this case, uh, we do have a, an office building that is not fully occupied. Um, so there's an adjustment that's required to account for the fact that we have a vacant office building, which I know the applicant would hope to re-tenant that building. Uh, so we'd ask for them to make some adjustments upwards to reflect the fact that the office building is vacant. Um, the second thing that we asked them to look at is motor vehicle crash data. Uh, the unique nature of this site, because it's on Route nine with a median, requires that if vehicles want to head uh, westbound towards the Worcester direction, they need to make a U-turn essentially, um, up at Oak Street. And then if they're coming home from the Framingham side and they want to come to the site, they need to make a U-turn at the Breakneck Hill Road intersection. And so we had asked the applicant to look at those two locations, not with respect to the impact of the project, uh, because the project itself, it generates about twenty-six peak hour trips over the course of an hour. So that's not gonna cause an increase in delays or vehicle queuing at the intersections, but the concern was more both of those intersections are high crash locations. So the number of crashes that are happening at each of those intersections is higher than the state average. Um, so we had asked the applicant to look at the crashes occurring at the intersections and whether those crashes involve U-turn maneuvers, just given the fact that that's really where the additional demand from the project's going to be placed at those locations. So to the extent that there is a, an issue that contributes to crashes at the intersection relating to the U-turns, we wanted them to identify that and then potentially uh, develop some remedial measures as it relates to that. And then the last set of comments that we had were looking at, uh, recommendations for the project itself at the, at the appropriate time. So we had suggested to the applicant uh, that they consider implementing what's known as transportation demand management measures, which are measures that can be put as a part of the operation of the project to reduce traffic and parking demands. So, um, that was probably, uh, a longer short version of what my comments were in the initial review. The applicants responded to each of those and they've responded to those in a positive manner. Uh, so they have performed the adjustments of the traffic volumes that we had requested. Uh, so they didn't adjust the raw traffic counts, so the volumes that we're looking at from the standpoint of assessing the impacts of the project are higher than average, so they exceed what the state would require them to look at. And again, that's standard practice when we conduct a traffic study. Um, at the time that the traffic counts were taken for their study, uh, the office building was about thirty-five percent vacant. So they adjusted all of their traffic counts upwards by thirty-five percent to account for a full occupancy of the office building. Um, after doing that, they, uh, reassessed the impact of the project. Um, and, and really the impact of the project, again, when we have twenty-six total vehicle trips over the course of an hour. So it's roughly about one additional vehicle every two minutes during the hour that's coming or going from the project site. Just considering that in relation to the volume of traffic on Route nine, which during the peak hours is well over two thousand vehicles per hour going in each direction on that road. Uh, what it showed as it relates to the project is you wouldn't notice the additional trips associated with the residential project. Uh, so it, from an impact perspective, um, it affirmed the same results in the original assessment in that the project will not produce a significant impact um, on the flow of traffic along Route nine or the ability of vehicles to enter or exit the, the property by way of the existing driveway itself. Um, as it relates to the motor vehicle crash analysis, uh, the applicant's engineer looked at, um, the most recent years, they looked at the entire year of twenty twenty-three and all of the crashes that happened at the two signalized intersections on either side of the project site. Uh, the majority of the crashes that are occurring are rear-end crashes coming up to the intersection, um, which is common at a signalized intersection because it's signalized intersections. A lot of times what you have is people need to decide, am, am I gonna stop on that yellow light, uh, or I'm gonna go through the intersection? Um, we find that that indecision that occurs or that the person in front of you decides they're going to stop and the person beside, behind them doesn't recognize the fact they're going to stop and there's a lot of rear-end crashes. The other thing is when you have very busy intersections, which both of those intersections process a large volume of traffic, uh, just by virtue of the fact of people trying to get through the intersection, sometimes you just have vehicles bumper to bumper and they hit each other, rear-end crashes. So that's what's happening at both of those intersections. As it relates to those U-turn maneuvers, over that one-year period, there were no crashes reported, uh, that involved the U-turn maneuvers at either one of those intersections. So what that says to us in looking at the data is those, what we consider more awkward maneuvers, those are the most difficult maneuvers to make at an intersection is left turns and U-turns in particular um, at locations. And so the U-turn maneuvers where the project is going to be adding traffic, uh, were not, uh, a, a contributing factor or we did not find that there was a contributing factor of crashes, uh, at those intersections. The rear-end crashes that are occurring can be, uh, dealt with through just signal retiming at those intersections. So we think that that's something Mass D O T will regularly do that, especially because of the fact these are on the state's high crash list. So because of that, they rise to a higher level where the state monitors and makes adjustments to those intersections. So we fully expect that that's something that's gonna occur and typically occurs just when you have high crash locations. So the last set of comments that we had again were related to the, um, suggestions for conditions of approval as they relate to the project. Uh, we typically have standard conditions, which your, um, attorney will advise you of as they just relate to, you know, maintaining safe sightlines, uh, things like that, which we can work with, uh, council at the appropriate time to have those conditions. Um, in particular, as I mentioned, we had suggested the applicant implement transportation demand management measures and we've outlined what those measures would be that would be appropriate to the project. Um, the applicant has agreed to uh, include those as a part of the management plan for the project. So we've, our only comment, um, as it relates to that is uh, at the appropriate time that the board, uh, consider those as a condition of the approval of the project. Um, so that was the substance of our comments as they relate to transportation analysis. The applicant has addressed those. There is nothing outstanding as it relates to the transportation study. Uh, we did have several comments relating to the site plan, uh, which have not been addressed and we, and we expect that that would be the case because as we heard, they're still working on the site plans. Uh, we just reminded the applicant in our comment, um, that in particular, as it relates to the relocation of the building, um, that we had just provided some general guidance about making sure that, uh, fire department access has been, is provided in a safe manner so that they're able to circulate in the site. Considerations giving to loading where that will occur in the site. Providing parking or short-term parking for delivery service providers, so Uber, Lyft, DoorDash, all of those things which we know are common, especially at multifamily projects, you wanna make sure you have, gotta have an accommodation for them. And then lastly, the, it, the unique nature of locating a residential project in a parking lot essentially or close to a parking lot for an office building, uh, we wanna make sure that, uh, particular attention is paid to the primary travel route to get to the project site and that if you do have parking spaces there, you wanna make sure that you carefully consider the fact that you don't want vehicles backing out into the primary drive aisle to the residential building. So we offered that by way of guidance to the applicant at the last, uh, meeting. Um, and that does show up again in our review letter, just saying as they're working through the site plan, just remember, these were some of the general comments that we had provided. They should also consider the comments that we provided as they relate to the other buildings, just more related to circulation, uh, for the project, because those would still apply even with the building being relocated. So be happy to answer any questions that you have now or later on in the evening.
Thank you very much. That was, that was great. Um, I just, um, a brief summary, I mean, for what you asked for, it sounds like essentially you have cooperation from the applicant. They, they've agreed, they, they're providing what you're looking for. Um, there's really sounds like, uh, in terms of the site plan, you, you've said that we kinda have to wait on that because it's not fully, fully developed, so.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, we've, in terms of looking at the impact of the project off-site, so how it will impact the public traveled way.
Yeah.
Um, we're satisfied that they've submitted the information and that the analysis that they provided is credible and something that the board can rely upon as it evaluates the impact of the project in, again, in the public traveled way. Proving out the design of the building and access and safety and all of that are still kind of pending as it relates to it.
Of course, right, okay. Um, well, I'm, I'll, I'll ask, uh, the, uh, the, the board members if they have any questions. Uh, Doris, any questions?
I, I do have a question. Um. I don't know what the actual tenancy is gonna be at the new site, um, but should there be school buses? Okay, so if you could talk to me a little bit about school buses, cuz I, as I came down Route nine or assisted, assisted buses, um, or many various vehicles besides coming up to the building, I believe they will not come down that shared driveway. It seemed narrow. I saw a mother and two children standing at the corner of the side on Route nine. The sidewalk is narrow, the stop, I'm not sure what they were waiting for, if it was an Uber. Could you talk to me a little bit about what that's gonna look like?
That's, that's an excellent question. So as it relates, I'll kinda start, um, with the private van. So the private vans will go to the site, so they can come into the private property and go to the building and pick up, drop off, all of that. Uber, Lyft can do that as well. Um, school buses. Now, school buses, as you mentioned, that's an important consideration. So, um, I think as we look at the, the two things, first off is the application can, should, um, contact the school department and find out if they are going to pick up in the site. Um, if they are not going to pick up within the site, then there needs to be a safe way for children to walk to Route nine and then there needs to be a safe place for them to stand there. So what we usually suggest is that a widened sidewalk be provided so that the children don't have to stand right next to Route nine. They can be offset from that, so you widen the sidewalk area. But I think the first thing is if the school department is not going to send the bus into the site to pick up the children, then we need a sidewalk so the children, they're not walking in the same drive aisle that the people are coming into the office building, that they can walk separate. They can then get down to Route nine. They have a safe place to stand, not next to the Route nine traveled way. The second consideration as it relates to that is given the location of the building within the site, as we all know, a, a lot of parents do not want, they do not want their children standing on Route nine. So what they'll do is drive to the end of the driveway and sit there in the car while the child either stays in the car or they wait. Consideration needs to be given that that vehicle occupying the driveway physically restricts the width of the paved area. Twenty foot clear is what's required for the fire department, so we need twenty foot clear. So if children are gonna wait at the end of the street, we know parents are gonna park there. So consideration needs to be given to the fact that we need twenty foot clear at the end of the driveway. So I think as kind of the answers to those questions asked and the building design comes forward, those are the things that the applicant's gonna need to consider. Um, we'll also have to look at considerations as to the parent waiting at the end of the street so the child gets dropped off. If they wanna return to the building, how do they, uh, do they have to go back out onto Route nine and then make the U-turn and then go to the other intersection, make the U-turn and come back into the project site? So how do the parents reverse direction and get back through the building if they're not leaving the property itself? So that, those are very, that's very important questions that need to be answered. And I think we need to, probably two things. The applicant can contact the school department based on the answer from that, then it's consideration of the design of the project to see do we need to have a sidewalk to get the children down to Route nine because it's not appropriate for them to be walking in the driveway to get to the end of the road?
You certainly, uh, went, went well beyond my question, but those are some and, and all the other concerns I had. Um, based on it, all those things, I didn't think it was wide enough. I'm like, what if we're all backed up waiting for the children?
The, the nice thing that with the applicant controlling the entirety of the property is that, you know, they could, they could develop, you know, again, again, it's, it's up to them, but they could develop a, a pedestrian way that doesn't necessarily have to be right along the driveway. They have the opportunity to do something within the property and then connect out if the driveway needs to stay the width that is. So I think they have options to look at that. Um, and that's, that's a good thing, cuz they could, you know, for lack of a better term, master plan the properties, the office buildings, the residential, see how they all interact with each other and then have an appropriate pathway to get down to Route nine.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. There is one local bus that circles the town, but I don't think it stops along Route nine. There's a local, uh, someone else might know that.
Well.
Cuz they would not come in. There is a local circle bus. I know it runs through Marlboro.
Right.
But that really does answer and address what I'm asking and I really appreciate your thorough answer.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Right, and, uh, that's something that you guys have in your listed to-do, right, for the, for the Columbus State Plan Traffic?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I didn't have any questions, but I thought Doris asked a great one and it got me thinking, cuz I have kids in the school system, is that there's constantly different bus contracts and what they'll agree to do and not do. So I guess we have to go in knowing that we may not have an answer So I guess we have to go in knowing that we may not have an answer into what the school says they will or will not do. We will only commit to picking up on Route nine, or we will commit to, you know, coming into the driveway and doing, you know, picking up the kids in front of the building. It's just, it's more something to think about, it's not a question.
Generally, what I would say is that in, Route nine may be a specific, special circumstance, but in general, the bus company will not go on a private property because their insurance won't, they'll cover the buses in the private way, but they will not go on a private property. It's also the, the issue of the bus getting stuck there, and they do not want that to happen. If the bus, something happens and they're out in the public way, that's a whole different story. If they're in private property, there's liability and everything else that goes along with that. So I think to the extent that there's not an answer to that question, then the, you need to plan for the fact that you need to get them out to Route nine, and then if the buses come into the property, that, that's fine, but you've planned for the worst-case scenario, which is how does a, how does a child get from Route nine to the building to the extent that the bus, something changes, as you just said, if there's a different bus company contract, and they say we can't go on to that property because our insurance carrier won't cover that, design for that alternative.
Great.
We will follow up with the schools department following tonight.
Uh, Mike?
I'm just so glad Doris raised that question. Great question. I, I don't have anything even close to as good as that one. Those, those, I hadn't even thought of it, and it's so super important, so thank you.
It took, just to share some timeline, I think it took two years to come up over the drive.
To what?
To come up over Look Drive. There's a number of reasons people want to be picked, so it does take some time to work through it.
Okay, Doug?
I don't have any comments at this point.
Okay. And I, I don't as well. I, I, like I said, I appreciate this very thorough report and, and summary, so appreciate that. We will be hearing, you know, from you further, obviously, with that, when we get into the site.
Yes, and my pleasure, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think we do have a couple more substantive updates.
Sure.
Beyond traffic, if that's all right.
Yeah.
One thing that we're accounting for in the site plan is there's been concern raised at the last meeting, but also in discussion since, about the proximity of the proposed septic area to that corner lot and then the conservation area. And so our engineer has already made a change. I think the last version you saw would have had the corner of the lot as tight as nine feet from what is conservation land.
Okay.
And that corner of the septic field has been redesigned, so now it's, I think, 29 feet of separation.
Okay.
So we're working on pulling that back.
Okay.
And also adding the discussed landscaping as a visual buffer.
Okay.
Side of the field.
Yeah, that was, that was certainly one of the items that I wanted to raise tonight, because I think Doug did a really good job of pointing that out, and I think that's also come, come out as in comments from other folks in town. I looked at, I tried to look at it from different perspectives myself, and I, I could, I can see where the concern is if you, you know, you do, it, it, it wouldn't be difficult to have a, a view straight through everything if you do a lot of clear cutting there. So, so they've made a, they're making a change to go from nine feet to, was it 20?
29, I think was the last.
And, and in terms of, you know, more detailed plans, what's the status of that? Because I think we'd want to look at it, obviously, a little bit closer.
I think we could supplement what's already with your peer review, or at least any, any sheets that change as a result of that, but it won't be the whole set.
Yeah, right, right. If, if you have, yeah, if you have something that focus, that's one of the areas that's clearly going to be, you know, an eye, an area of interest. If you have something that can focus right in there, I know during the balloon test, Doug was looking at that specific, you know, corner with, with you, and he pointed out exactly, you know, what's already been stated, that it's pretty close, and you know, you clear that it's, it's not going to be a great look. But yeah, if you just have something that gives us a little bit more detail, even if it's not the full thing, I think it's, it's, it's going to help.
Will do. And speaking of the septic area, as recently as Monday night's planning board meeting where this project was discussed, the idea's been raised about the septic field for the 40B building being beneath what is now the rear office parking lot. And I can update the board that as recently as today, the applicant undertook digging of test pits to see if that, the area of the current parking lot would accept a septic field, and it will not.
Okay.
The groundwater is just too high, as we suspected, there's ledge in that vicinity.
Okay.
And so it seems like that unfortunately will not work. But as the planning board and its speakers noted, we have encountered that, we have existing office buildings and other properties where the septic field is beneath the parking lot, and it works well, it's just a soil ledge kind of issue at this location.
It, it won't, it won't park, yeah.
Correct. That's what we heard from our engineer today.
Thank you.
And I think the only other substantive matters were, I wasn't sure if the board would like to discuss at all the balloon tests, but as you mentioned, that occurred beginning of last week. And then the only other thing is that as planned, the applicant did file at the end of last week, the variance package with this board relating to parking. And what the parking needs of the entire site, lots 4A, 4B, 4C will be going forward as a result of the 40B. It also is a result of intended retail use in the first floor of the office building that's closest to Route nine.
So that, that, the variance is in regard to what was the, what the expected parking was for the buildings originally, correct?
Correct.
And so this would be reducing that number generally?
Exactly. The variance relates specifically to the future or continued office use as well as future retail, specifically Lot 4A. As you know, we've designed Lot 4B, the 40B lot, to have adequate spaces, so it'll have a ratio of 1.7.
Right, so the, the variance is not related to specifically the area of the project, but, but to the, the rest of the, the site basically, and what was originally approved, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And what was your, you said that we got 100 days to respond to that?
Yes, with variances, you have 100 days from the date of filing to act, to take your vote, make a decision, which since it was filed with the town clerk yesterday, that would bring us to Thursday, November 28th, as the deadline to act.
By the 28th, you said?
By November 28th, yep. And that is something we need to discuss with scheduling, because I know the applicant intended for that application to be heard in tandem with the comprehensive permit. So when we look at scheduling for this project, we should probably discuss opening the variance, public hearing for the variance, which needs to be done within 65 days as well, which is October 24th.
Okay, so, I mean, to act on this, we really need to, because you said there's more administrative work to do before we can really have a look at it, right? And we need to obviously schedule it here.
Preliminary administrative review, which I've already started, and you guys had responded to some of it, I believe.
But we could just make it part of our next meeting.
Yes.
Yep.
But it needs to be within 65 days.
Yep.
Of the date of filing, but prior to October 24th.
Prior to October, okay. Right? Continue the dance around dates.
Great.
Okay. Did you have anything else that you wanted to?
That's it.
Okay. Did you have something?
Where are we? So we're extended now through a few weeks from now?
Correct, I think the current action deadline is September 18th, and I talked with the applicant, and thinking ahead to, we need to talk obviously about when the next hearing date will be, but I think we're okay extending to November 20th, which is the board's scheduled November meeting date. So that's an additional two months.
I'm sorry, you're, you're talking about pushing out the deadline, or you're talking about the hearing?
The action deadline.
Yeah.
I understood that's what.
That's the close of the hearing deadline.
And while we're talking about it, I guess, we're optimistic upon hearing from L B C that they may be able to send their initial feedback within three to four days of having the final waivers last. I know that this board has a special meeting set on September 4th regarding Park Central, and we thought that may be an opportunity when everything would be in, and we could talk peer review substance that night if, if the board would be amenable to it.
Okay. Yeah, that's something to think about. That would require us to try to predict what's going to happen that night to begin with, which is interesting.
We also, just as a note, would Paul and Jamie are recused from Park Central?
Yeah.
So we're not planning on attending on the 4th.
Okay.
I can make the 4th.
You can.
That makes sense, yeah.
Okay.
That's scheduled for seven o'clock.
Park Central, seven o'clock? I know there are the other boards that would like to have things to, to raise here. I would like to not have it go wild without a full plan, but I think they're, they're, you know, they're valid concerns. And I taught, so if it's okay with you, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm, I'm, I'm just putting a pause on when we, on the continuation, that's okay? That, I mean, administrative.
Yeah, we just have to deal with it before we can.
Right.
At some point.
Before we conclude, right. Did you want to, did you want to talk about your memo, Debbie?
Debbie Di Maria, 58 Flag Road, but I'm speaking as a member of the planning board this evening. And just for the record, we do not have a quorum, but I believe we might have one other member, Elisa Braccio. First, I want to thank the zoning board of appeals for the tremendous job, job that they're doing with the 40B applications and keeping the public informed and other boards and committees. And so I appreciate the opportunity to just review the letter that was sent to you yesterday. I just wanted to make a couple of points. The planning board met on just past Monday, the 19th, and had a discussion about this proposal related to the plan set dated July 24th. So I'll just mention like sort of the top six points. You've received the letter, the number of pages, and it gets into the details, but just, just in terms of these top priorities from the planning board perspective, and frankly, also from the public, the first concern we have really is around the 6.2 acres. Of course, that's no surprise, I think that's where you're getting a lot of the comments, and we are too, as a member of the board. We're going to request that the applicant convey the 6.2 acres. This is an enforceable condition, and it's not contingent on the approval of the comprehensive permit. So as you know, a condition of the exercised and recorded 2019 major site plan approval required that 6.2 acres of the southern portion contiguous to Breakneck Hill Conservation Land be donated to the town in the care and control of the Conservation Commission. So the current plan, for example, has disturbance both above and below that lot. And so we're asking that the proponent donate the lot to the town in compliance with the 2019 condition. In addition, some of the points about this is that there should be no trees, no vegetation disturbed, grading or removal of trees in the submitted plans violates the condition of the 2019 major site plan approval where the property was to be donated as, as open space. There's significant grading that's shown on Lot 4C right now up to the conservation land with no tree replanting proposed. The area is currently heavily tree-lined and would provide some buffering between the conservation land and the proposed buildings and structures. The grading and the tree removal violates the condition of the 2019 major site plan approval, which states that the property was to be donated as open space and left in its natural state. The drainage swale and septic are currently shown within the 6.2 acres, and this too violates the 2019 major site plan condition. I'm, I'm actually thankful to Attorney Chergill for mentioning the, that the applicant was looking into the feasibility of moving the septic or the possibility of septic under, under the parking lot. We look forward to hearing a little, a little bit more, but it doesn't sound like that perk went very well, but perhaps there's other creative ideas. And the planning board believes that the major site plan modification is required for the 6.2 acre parcel. The second is that the five stories is unacceptable. The town of Southborough has by design limited the height of our buildings in town, with one exception, that's Madison Place, which is at four stories. Our infrastructure in Aldrich districts is under four stories. The third point is on subdivision. The zoning board of appeals comprehensive permit regulations and guidelines, which the Z B A was required to promulgate under 760 C M R 56, section 4131, requires that all plans submitted shall conform to the requirements of the town's subdivision rules and regulations, section 24410, definitive plan. The plans that are submitted are in many ways difficult to read, and it's difficult to determine the lots that are being created, so that for the planning board is an issue. The fourth is the waivers that Attorney Chergill did mention. We, we find that the blanket waivers are not acceptable. The Z B A had previously rejected the proponent's request for blanket waivers for the entire zoning by law, for example. So I understand that there's an attempt to go back and provide some, maybe some more granularity. We encourage the Z B A to reject any blanket requests and also to accept any enumerated requests and that the applicant provide a reason for the waiver. Fifth point is affordability. We would request that the affordable units should be in perpetuity. And the sixth is ADA compliance, and the development should be ADA compliant, and the plans should reflect the ADA considerations. So those are the major, the six, our six major points. There's several pages after that, but we, you know, appreciate the opportunity to provide this comment.
Okay. Thank you. So, I don't know if we want to, I, I would like to address some of, some of these. As far as the, the donation, I mean, you, you do, you are proposing to donate land, right? There, there's a specific area being proposed to donate.
Yes.
I don't know if it's just about the timing, they're, they're, I think the, the argument is it needs to be, needs to be donated to the town. I don't know, what's, what, what are the, the plans as far as that goes?
It's timing.
Is it just timing?
I mean, we addressed this last session too. I, listen, I believe strongly that this parcel should have been donated long ago by the prior owner, but there's no plan that creates a separate lot. It doesn't exist, so they could donate a conservation easement right now, but that's not what the requirement of the planning board decision says. So I think we have to get to a process that creates a separate lot. There's two ways to do that. This process where we can create a separate lot, which is what the applicant is suggesting, or the applicant could go in at any time to the planning board and do that too. My concern there is that if that lot doesn't match up ultimately with what this board sees as a vision for what's going to be donated, for example, through engineering or otherwise, that line that they're showing is, may not be the final line. It may get, be much improved from the perspective of the zoning board, the public, the planning board. So I'm hesitant to recommend that we jump ahead to a use of a lot line that folks are dissatisfied with, that we're hearing they're dissatisfied with right now before the, the board's experts or the board has had a chance to have that dialogue with the applicant on other ways to lock up this property and actually endorse a plan that someone that can convey property under.
Okay.
So I, I agree entirely with the planning board that this is something that's a higher priority.
Yeah.
They are a hundred, and I think this board does.
I think we, we do as well.
Yeah.
But, um.
I'm not saying the applicant doesn't. It's just, they know they have to get there.
Right, right. But I, I would agree. I, I, it, I mean, you're moving the, the septic lines right now, so, um, I think we're all aware of it. Um, I mean, it's fine that they, they, they raise it to us. I, I think I agree that in general, we have to keep that, be cognizant of it, but it has to really be part of the, the process that we're now going through, right? I mean, we, we're, we're out for, for peer review, so.
To give the board a sense of the imminence, the applicant has let, I think, most people who have asked know it's important to the applicant to complete the donation this calendar year.
Right, right.
There's not a lot of time, uh, left in terms of, or I want the, the town to be reassured that the applicant is really ready to do that as part of this, this board's comprehensive permit issuing.
Right, okay. Yep, I did, I was aware of that. That's, thank you for reminding me of that. Okay.
Can I, can I offer a couple other observations?
Go, go ahead.
First of all, I, I read the, the Planning Board's note. I think they make a lot of excellent comments about plan detail on the subdivision plans. I think our, if our peer reviewer hasn't already been provided with their comment letter, I think this is good information to provide to them as they're assessing compliance and what need, what is needed for more detail. Some of that stuff for a 40B may not be absolutely necessary, but it's important that those points get conveyed to our peer reviewers so that they can chew on them as well. There's obviously a revised waiver list coming, so that, um, will be considered. On the affordability question, there is no chance in any universe that they won't be perpetually affordable, uh, surviving foreclosure and any other mechanism that might wipe out affordability. The state wants that. The town would settle for nothing less, so that's important to note from the get-go. The rest of the stuff I thought was the, um, Planning Board's interest in shaping the project and bringing their points on, and those are policy questions that I'd leave to you all and the applicant.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and I, I felt the same way regarding the waivers. I mean, I think there, there's already, we, we made it clear, obviously, we don't want blanket waivers, but I took a look at it and there, there is more detail in there and I think more detail is yet to come as we proceed, correct?
Yes. The new list is going to be very precise.
Yeah.
The wetlands could maybe get, be broken down a little bit more, right? I'm assuming it will.
Okay.
And I want to say for everybody regarding ADA compliance, following, uh, the one speaker's question at the meeting on the 31st of July, we did ask our architect, I think the next day, just to be sure, and he unequivocally said that the design will be ADA compliant.
Okay. Okay, I mean, the, I, I think, you know, the, another, you know, fairly obvious one that we knew would be at least discussed is the, is the five stories. I was present, Doug was present for the, for the balloon test. I, I thought it was, I'm, I'm not sure how many members of the public. So I, um, you know, my own, I don't know, we can, Doug, you can, we can, you can, you can talk about what your, what your findings were there. Um, certainly, I don't know that the concern would be really from the Route 9 side of things. I mean, it, uh, what I found, found is it was almost hidden behind the building approaching from that direction. The obvious concern is really from the other direction. And I think, I don't know, some of that, I think, is relative to, you know, what we, what we're talking about in terms of the property lines and where you, you clear things. Um, I think Doug had some really good observations there. There's a lot of pretty tall trees back there. Uh, you know, the concern is the underbrush because the tall pine trees provide a lot of, you know, screening, but at a, at a fairly high level, so, you know, I would say representing the town is, does anybody want to be walking through the conservation land and, you know, be, you know, staring at all the buildings there? Um, and, you know, if you, I don't know, I don't know if you can really see them now, but that's, that's probably the area of concern. And Doug, if I'm not really explaining it well enough, feel free to, feel free to jump in.
No, David, I would agree. I mean, I think, um, it, it was definitely hidden behind the office building for the most part through the inside. Um, I do think the concern is the, uh, clearing of the area, you know, there, the, um, the septic field, but I did see the capkins modifying it, so I'm sure we see that, something further reviewed as well.
Okay.
We would.
Um, but yeah, okay, yeah, sure, go ahead.
I was on the site that day. I.
Sorry, Doris was there.
I was definitely there.
My bad.
And, um, when you come in, it was actually difficult to find the balloon, although one of the balloons broke. Um, and I was speaking with one of the, um, uh, one of the plant engineers and my thought, in case it comes up, was discussed, um, can you dig it down a floor? I think it's, you know, can we lower? And they, they felt as though the water table would get in the way. Um, you know, bring it down, but I, I did not get the sense, looking at the single balloon. I didn't feel as though it was five stories because of the slant, the land. Um, but it would be so attractive to knock a floor off it. It's still tall, so, um, but I didn't think they could go lower from my discussion with the engineer and the way the property slants off. Um, the, the other site observation I had, and I'm hearing it tonight, they're gonna look at the septic, and I'm not a septic engineer, is, um, if there's some creative way to, uh, there were some drainage issues discussed too in the swale, and again, I'm not a septic engineer. Um, to look at how that dog park, it, I'm not saying I don't like dogs, but do, do we need the dog park to move it further? To protect views further from the, um, from the boundary. And I'm not saying yes, I'm just saying creation, creative and really work with the feedback we're getting from open space and from planning.
What's driving that area being open is the septic system itself, which will be subsurface. And so the dog park really just something to put on top of it, and the same with the playground. So we could, on the plan, say there won't be a dog park, but that won't affect the area.
So it's gonna stay clear.
You still have, you still have the leach field. The leach field has to stay clear.
And, and the engineer has really, truthfully, and Attorney Bonan and I have followed up with him more than,
Every day.
Daily about, seriously about it. And he's, you know, pulled it back as much as he can to move the field.
Okay.
North and west.
Yeah, okay.
Which is, so we, you know, he said to us, literally, the best he can do is the 29 feet of separation that, that'll be on.
Okay.
Submission.
So everybody's talking about it.
Uh, no question.
Okay.
It's what we've talked about the most.
Yeah.
With the civil engineer.
Right.
Right, and, um, again, on the height of the building, um.
We're at five stories.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and we've, we, from the applicant's perspective, we have taken off a floor by bringing it from six down to five already.
Okay, I know that.
Yep. And, and is, uh, the folks that attended the balloon test.
Uh, the, the other is, is the footprint, then you're back at the footprint and you're back, you're back in the six acres, you're extending it to the front and the back, and I have a good sense it's 210 feet, two, a little over two football fields long and, and almost a football field wide, so.
That's right.
If you flip that, now you've got, you're adding 25 feet to each side, so it just wouldn't fit.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we're.
For 60 units, it wouldn't fit. We fit for less units.
Correct. And we're providing for traffic circulation around the building itself. You know, on all four.
Yeah, it starts to pop, right? So it's just, okay, so, less units would, would be the only solution on it, okay.
If I may add one more thing before I move on, um, I wanted to make it clear that the fifth floor is significantly, um, smaller than the rest of the footprint of the building.
Which, correct. It's not the same size as the rest of the footprint.
It, it has to be a minimum height. Do, in, in what do you, you mean by?
What I mean by that is the, um, length and width of the fifth floor is not the same as, uh, floors one through four. It's smaller. So therefore, it's not gonna be.
Not a rectangle.
Yeah, well, no, it's a rectangle, but it won't be as easy to see. It's a less.
Yeah, the, I think the effect of it is by setting it back is it doesn't appear quite like, if you're all the way out, it'd be, be kind of in your face, but by, by setting it back, the effect is it actually looks a little bit lower.
And I don't know if it was, who I spoke with that day was, the, you, and that's way down the pipeline, the facade materials, um, to make them absorb and to somehow picking the proper facade on that would, and I'm not gonna get much further than that.
Okay.
To blend better, yeah.
In, in the rendering that Ms. Davis pulled up, you see what Attorney Bonan referred to, which is that with the fifth floor, it's, uh, a penthouse approach.
Oh, I, that's, that's what.
Has an effect of not making.
And, and so to be clear, the, the balloon that you saw flying was, Ms. Davis, if you don't mind, yeah, go right of there. So we wanted to represent the height, but at the outer corner. So that, exactly, that's where the balloon flew. But the reality of the top corner will be much more inward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Jamie, do you have questions?
Um, I just wanted to say, I, I did go to the balloon test. I think it was probably later than everyone. I think everyone was gone, but I, I did go and look at it and drive around. Um, and I was actually surprised by how hard it was to find and see from Route 9. So, and I did also kind of drive back up Oak Hill and went around and tried to see if I could see it in different points and I couldn't. Um, so obviously from the open space is, which everyone knows, is where it's gonna really have an effect. I think if we can get to a point of gain that buffer between, where we can move the septic to, I don't have as big of a problem as of the five story, honestly. I do have a question, though. When I was looking at that fifth floor, and I, it's hard to picture, but would it make sense for, because it's hard to see from Route 9, is almost gonna look bigger from the open land space because, because the penthouse piece is back that way? That's the easiest way to explain.
It's in on both ends. It's not like it's mass toward the back. The whole thing kind of steps up from both ends and both sides.
Okay, so it's in the center and it's offset both equally, both from the back and the front is what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I don't know if it would make a difference to move it more towards the front, towards that Route 9 entrance. It may not. It's just something I just thought of.
And the architects, I think, have said it's, as a matter of design, it's important to be symmetrical
Hmm.
with the lesser width and lengths on both.
Makes sense. But anyways, that was my observation.
Right, um, Mike, I actually can just, sure, yeah. Mike, did you have any questions?
I do not.
Uh, Doug? Do you have any questions?
I do not this time.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on a couple of, David Ferris, yep, for the project developer. I just wanted to touch on a couple of quick points before I left, which was, uh, to reiterate Brian's comments that we are committed to making this donation prior to year end. And regardless of how we got here or what got done or didn't get done prior to our stewardship of the parcel, we are very, very, uh, pleased with how responsive and how productive the conversations have been with this board and the select board, and we really want to say thank you because it's been a very constructive process. Even that balloon exercise went well. And I, and, and I truthfully was surprised to see at the outer corner how low it looked when I stood next to it, but, um, I have, um, hired the engineer that was formerly an outside engineer now to be a full-time internal engineer, just because what I've recognized in this collaborative process with the community is it really takes a lot of additions to get this stuff right, and it's frankly easier to put him on my payroll and have him next to George Bonan's office. And, um, you know, we really took to heart, um, Doug's comments and Freddie's comments, and Freddie, I think, was the original person who flagged the sort of clear light issue going through the septic field. And we did, and, and I know we, we talk in abstracts like, oh, we redesigned the septic field, but I really want the board to know that in an internal collaborative process, that, that, that when we talk about that issue, it really involves like manifolds of like layout in pipes and how the design functionally changes to be able to gain those feet. And it involves like a shortening of certain pipes that are closer to the field, and it, it's really, like, creates a lot of design challenges to the point where James, who I really, you know, respect, was in the office for an entire weekend just figuring out a pump that would accommodate customizing that system. So there's a lot of intricacies that go into even finding 20 feet of buffer beyond the nine feet that was there, and I just want this board to know every time something like this is raised, we take it seriously. We're gonna vet it as much as we can, including, you know, Freddie's comment about, um, the fact that there was some grading issues that she spotted on the topo. And, and I've given her, you know, total transparency and access to any plans our developer, our, our civil engineer has to, to share completely in, 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 into this board as well. To the extent that there's any information that we have, we're open and transparent. We'll share that with any, anybody that's involved in the project, but, um, we, um, may have submitted the plan without additional like, um, uh, buffery, greenery planted, but that's an easy give that of course we would do if we're disturbing anything in that 29 feet. We want something fast growing to be able to create the, you know, buffer that everybody's really trying to achieve. It's just a septic field issue in terms of square footage and where, how, how far away we can keep it, so. I just wanted to reiterate that we want the process to move forward at the right speed for the town and to be able to fully vet it, but we also want to transfer the donation to the town. Despite our opinions about whether we're legally obligated or not, we think it does fit well in terms of expanding the existing conservation land and whatever we leave behind, we want to do it in the right way, and so we really appreciate it, and it's been going really well, and thank you. That's it.
Thank you. All right, um, I don't know if any. Okay, all right. We'll, 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 uh, we'll take the, the Zoom, uh, first. Hold on a second, and we'll, we'll go to you next.
Go ahead, Kristen.
Thank you. Hi, it's Kristen LeVall from 12 Southwood Drive. My, actually, my, I more so have questions just to clarify kind of where we are in the process. I've been trying to keep up with some meetings. And I'm, I guess, admittedly, I'm getting confused, so I think that other citizens may as well. I attended a meeting in, I think, the, the advisory, excuse me, the Planning Board meeting in June, where I think Mr. Ferris attended. We talked about the six and a half acres. He seemed more than willing, obviously, to make it happen as he is tonight. And we also discussed the height of the buildings then too, so. Then I attended another meeting on, and, and by the way, that meeting was, was highly attended by a lot of citizens. On, I believe, July 22nd, there was a more contentious meeting where Mr. Ferris was very upset with the Planning Board, so I'm trying to recall what that was about. I, I thought it might have to do with the height of the buildings and the six and a half acres. I'm, I'm, I'm struggling to remember, but I think this is very important because I'm hearing different tones. Right? In June, there was one tone. In July, there was a very aggressive tone. So you all, of course, are consistently involved in this discussion, so I just want to make sure I'm following the timeline of events correctly. The last, I guess the last question I'll, I'll say is then tonight I come and I, I listened to Ms. Di Maria and I, I agree with her completely that, um, in addition to the 6.5 acres, which it sounds like that may be less of an issue, the five stories, that is a concern. I think that's something that should go in front of the town. You can go to Westboro, you can go to Framingham, you can see how these buildings look. And if they are conservation lands, actually going to see it, that is disturbing, but it's not even actually just that. It is, it is the look, and for a town that has been very concerned over the past five to 10 years on maintaining a certain rural landscape and, you know, Main Street, we had such a hard time getting through. It, it also feels like something that if we're gonna all of a sudden switch from three to five, that should be something that's more broadly considered across the town. So, again, whomever might want to address any of those points. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I don't know, I, I'll, I'll try to help you in terms of the timeline. I mean, we, we've looked at preliminary plans, we've looked at some, at, at plans in more detail. Um, we, and, and this, this is the process as I understand it, we are, uh, uh, going through peer review. So the peer review is, is where, you know, we have the hired experts to go through the different parts of the plan. And we get feedback from them, and they, they do look at the elements of the project, how they relate to, to town code as well as state code. And I guess, you know, everybody understands that a 40B project, you know, it very specifically, you know, basically exempts a lot of the, the, the town code, so, um, that's where we are. Um, I'm, this is not to sideline any of the comments. They're all, uh, They're all, uh, they're all valid. But, you know, there will be continued opportunities to talk about the, the five stories and, uh, and the screening from the, from the open land for the, the septic.
Um, just curious, any comments from Mr. Ferris?
Yes, I, 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 thanks, thanks for your comments. And, and I would, uh, absolutely, uh, concur with your assessment that, you know, at different evenings, you get different personality sets in large part because of the audience that you're speaking to. I think in, in reality, um, we bought the property with a pretty clear legal understanding. Like we buy a lot of properties, we did the analysis and we saw the different agreements in place when we bought it and we bought it with the expectation that we do own that land. And we have a fundamental legal difference of opinion and interpretation of whether we're required to donate the land. And we're very, very clear. And I think anyone, even without a law degree, of which I'm a lawyer, like three other, four others in the room. You know, my interpretation and even a layman's interpretation would be the land is to be deno- donated prior to the expiration of the permit, i.e. the parking garage that was issued. That didn't happen for whatever reason. And my fundamental angst with the planning board is thrusting the entire problem on one side of the table. I think to get problems solved, you got to really be collaborative and share responsibility. And we bought the property and we want to share responsibility and I grew up in the community. And so I want to find a solution that works for everybody and is, for lack of a better term, is least impactful to everybody in the room. And I feel like, um, when you work with different boards, you get different results. And I feel like this is a very, for lack of a better term, well-read board that looks at all of the legal and the underlying goals of the community rather than just anti-development. And I think like, we really do have a big affordable housing issue. And if you're going to plant a 40B in any part or any community, you got to do it responsibly or you get tons of pushback. And I feel like we are buttressing some conservation land, but we're really doing our part, trying to donate as much of that, six and a half, 6.2 acres, whatever it is, and still accomplish some very important goals and objectives for affordable housing. And so I think that, um, the, the idea that it's all one way, like just donate the land immediately and send the town building inspector to go enforce that, that's just not pragmatically the way the real world works. There's lawyers, there's agreements and there's a whole bunch of, um, in between that. And so, you know, I think that, um, the select board and the ZBA sort of have looked at the broader town planning initiative and they see, I think, the benefits that could be a win-win for the community. I think what we're doing as a developer in the community is trying to pick up something that was missed and, 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 and partner with the community to, um, donate the land and then get some entitlement that also meets some planning objectives. So, you know, when you see frustration, I think that's kind of part of the whole collaborative process. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I, may I just, and it'll be short, can I just respond to that?
Yeah, but I would like to, I would like to say something briefly though. I, I feel like we're getting into nitpicking on, I know the 6.2 acres is important. There's no way this board's letting go of that. They've agreed to, to donate it and I, I just, I, I'm going to find it a waste of time to keep nitpicking at this when we know it's going to happen, but.
Yeah, I, I agree. I just, I just feel like we're just going in circles on this stuff.
Uh, it, I'm actually not nitpicking at the 6.2 if he's agreeing to hand that over just flat out. But honestly, the tone that he's showing versus the tone when we had June in a, a room full of people is very different. And so, and he is questioning some of the legal, eh, uh, attributes to that. Mr. Ferris, I also grew up in the area, so we have that in common. I, the last thing I just want to say is that you, you're insisting on these five levels needed, yet you're also saying it's for affordable housing. We know this is not affordable housing. This is housing based on the Southborough meeting income. You admitted that yourself in a past luck board meeting, the most recent one. So please, why couldn't you reduce the number of units so we can therefore meet our three-story, you know, accommodation and you help us solve our 40B? That's it. Thank you.
Well, the meeting is kind of getting extended now.
Yeah. And microphone, please.
Thank you. The meeting's kind of getting extended. You know, I'm just picking up on your comments. Jay made his comments about, you know, the status of the six or so acres. Uh, the comment about the affordability, this is a 40B project. It has requirements for affordability for an area that's larger than Southborough in terms of a geographic area, provide affordable housing. Those are the strictures that we're under.
I understand.
I'd like to move forward because, um, until you see a full set of plans and you've made your comments known about seeing the balloon, not seeing the balloon, the undergrowth, et cetera. You know, I think we can then move forward with real substantive issues and concerns.
Okay.
You know, this generalized statement, five stories is too high and three would be better and underground would be even best.
Okay.
Uh, I would agree, underground would be best. But it can't be.
We can't have that until we get plans.
Exactly. And I think when we get the plans and you have peer review, I was expect a long, a comprehensive, uh, review by the planning board, by this board and by anybody else who wants to weigh in on particulars, you know, on, the actual, you know, plan and what peer review has said. You know, we, as a way of example, I mean, in the beginning, several meetings ago, we had peer review initially by the traffic, Mr. Jeff. And he had some negative comments about what we did. And per Mr. Ferris's, you know, concept, we worked through with those. We told our peer review fellow, pay attention to them. Right? And he did. And we came to satisfy him. You know, we met his criteria. And I've been through a lot of 40Bs. So is, uh, Jay. You know, that's the process that gets you to the finish line. All right? You know, by some level of compromise discussion. And there are issues at times that the parties can't agree upon. And unfortunately, and very unfortunately, those issues wind up at the HAC. I don't want to wind up at the HAC if I can avoid it. Okay? And I, I know Jay doesn't. Okay? But we going to work through the details. All right? And real comments, I think, you know, from Mr. Ferris and at least from this scheme are going to get paid attention to. All right? It's just not worth not paying attention to them because they can be real. So can we move on tonight? And, um, one thing I would remind you, and I think Jay will remind you is you got to accept the extension, I think, to the 20th of November. And we need to write your letter tomorrow confirming it and send it to the town.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Could, could we, but I, I mean, I know there was something that came from, uh, open space, so.
Yes.
Sorry. She's got, she's got the microphone.
So I'm Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission.
But actually Freddie, could I just, could I just say one thing? Just bear in mind what we're just said about getting into boring into the details. Right? I know you have, you have some general comments here, but so.
Correct. I heard what you said. We are an official commission of the town of Southborough. We had, had several meetings deeply reviewing this and our, um, opinion deserves to be heard. So I'm, I'm not going to repeat things that were in our letter and I'm not going to repeat and rehash some of these things. I want to say that, um, we sent a letter that you received yesterday, from our prior meeting before most recent information sent. I want to make that clear. We didn't have the list of waivers and we didn't have a new sketch or drawing engineered of the mu- uh, moving of the septic field, which we understand is going to be moved again. We had a meeting scheduled as soon as we got those, the soonest we could schedule it was this afternoon. So I just came here after a three-hour open space commission meeting. I don't have all of our comments written out and I will send those. I want to say that this morning I got an email from Mr. Ferris requesting a phone call. We had a, um, what I thought was mutually respective. I'm sorry, respectable. Always respectable. Sorry. It's been a long day. We were, it was mutually respectful is the word I'm looking for, um, conversation for 45 minutes. And then I went to the open space commission and relayed some of this. Part of what he told me was that, um, they did look into putting the septic under the parking lot and they had dug, they had dug test pits. And I was welcome to go by, which I did after five o'clock today, um, after the open space commission meeting. And I saw no evidence of the test pits, which I'm not saying they're not there, but I've seen many. So I'm hoping that we can get written documentation, um, where those were done, what the results were. Because what he said is the water table's too high, that really might be done. But, you know, we would like to see that because we know that they're using under parking lo- um, parking lot septic. And that's the big problem here. Take the septic off the hill, there's no problem with the open space, right?
Okay. But, but that is again, that is a detail. Correct? The septic plan as part of the overall, the peer review.
Well, you sent a list of mute, and I know they, uh, the planning board talked about the waivers, but I'm familiar with comprehensive permit law that says if you have a subdivision, only the 40B lot gets the waivers. The, the lot with the office buildings and the lot with the open space isn't the 40B lot. And you don't have a 40B lot until you do the subdivision. So to me, granted, I'm not a lawyer, but to me, it seems like you're putting the cart before the horse because.
I, I don't think that's the case and I, I'm not sure Mr. Tullman would.
No, it's, it's well understood that waivers only go to the 40B lot itself.
So we're looking at all of the wetland waivers are not on the 40B lot. And they don't go for.
Well, it would include that they are including the 6.2 acres as part of the 40B locus. So I don't know what, because as we said earlier, the Ford, the wetland waivers were, were very generic as presented to us. So we're waiting for more detail there. We can't waive wetland compliance under the local bylaw with respect to any other lot other than the 40B. We haven't had a wetland consultant review the work on the 40B lots.
So what, what I am, and this is, this is, um, to me, a big important detail that you don't have a 40B lot until you do the subdivision. You have to have a subdivision that takes out the office buildings and all, unless you're going to do a separate, another subdivision that separates the 40B building lot from the open space lot. And therefore, none of the waivers requested go on the open space or the office building lot.
We, we, we discussed this early on. The subdivision is going to happen as part of this process. They've requested that this board endorse a subdivision plan. We addressed that early on. I don't know if you were here or not.
I was.
Um, so that is part of the same process. All of those local processes are subsumed into the 40B process at all happens at once. The, the remaining lot that'll be carved off is the, um, is the office lot. And they will have to go back to the planning board for amended site plan review for that. But the, this board has the authority to carve that off.
Again, the waivers seem to be on the full property.
It's not, not, it's not, not to my knowledge, but we're, that's why we have peer review.
That's why we have peer review. And we can please let that be part of the peer review. We're really not going to talk about it here.
Okay. So in, um, final comment, that's not too detail oriented. Um, we did, I did do the balloon test like everyone else said. I walked the conservation land and was not able to see the balloon. But that wasn't as significant as we could see the red brick building behind the balloon. We would have expected an orange balloon that, and half of the time it was in the wind, not straight up in the air. It wasn't the full height. But I'm not complaining about that because we could see the red brick building through the trees a little bit. Picturing no trees at all is significant. And I don't know if anyone else walked the conservation land during that test. But I will say that, um, happy to work with the project proponent, but the open space commission points that no, no clearing. What you have is where the, where the, I'm just saying where the grading is. There's no, it's not, um, the, the plans say CA for cleared area around the septic. But it doesn't designate that all of the land being graded is going to be clear. We'd like to see that on a plan.
Be right. Well, I, I think that will, will go, it's been raised. It's clearly a, a big issue here. We're aware of it.
Okay. And the 29 feet that is on the new plan that we saw, it's not 29 feet if you read where the clearing is.
We need to actually, we don't even have the, the plan yet. I can't possibly comment on, on the, with the, with the, they, they said they changed it, but they're, they're going to give us more detail on, on what that looks like.
Okay. I'm just saying that it shows 29 feet and it's not because it's 29 feet to the septic, but not to where the grading happens.
Okay.
So we're talking no buffer visually between that and the.
The, again, we've, it's been raised several times. We know that the screening and the buffering is going to be a big thing. We're clearly going to be focused on that. But I really would like to see the plans before.
Okay.
Start hammering on that.
And then just the final comment is the grading itself is not an allowable use on the conservation land. So there will be no, should be no clear cutting at all on the conservation land.
Okay.
No grading, no clearing, no drainage, swale. Liability to the town. Big expense to the town to manage that land after the fact and people getting hurt walking the land.
Okay. Thank you.
For the record, on July 29th, the applicant filed a full site plan set, which is with the town's peer reviewer at LDC. And following the meeting on the 31st, the applicant filed a full septic system design. That's with LDC as well. What we'll do following tonight is make sure that any changes to those filed sheets that relate to pulling the system back to the 29 feet we've been talking about tonight are slip sheeted or supplemented.
Okay.
So that you and the peer reviewer have those.
All right.
But, but again, there's a site plan and a septic design with your peer reviewer and the board already.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Bonifatia 179 Middle Road. Someone that has served on multiple committees, the school bus question was a good one. I was on the regional school committee. It's a superintendent question. It is also contract negotiation, um, that the superintendent should be made aware of now. Uh, I'm not sure where their contract status is. And typically on Route nine, there's short buses that they use. And Madison Place, a bus does go to Madison Place. My daughter was on that bus, even though it's a private way. But that should be a discussion with the superintendent. The other thing is there's an opportunity here to provide housing, a different type of housing. I have, uh, friends that live at Madison Place. They love it there. They're isolated there, but there is no elevators in any of those buildings. So this is an opportunity to provide housing for individuals that would like to be closer to downtown instead of being on a list, waiting for a first floor apartment and someone that has served on your ADH compliance committee for over 10 years. I think there's a big opportunity the town can take. As far as the height goes, yes, I know three stories, you don't require an elevator. Four to five, yes, but I'm not here to make that decision for you. I also think it's a time that we need to move on from some of the discussions we already have. The 40B is pretty standard. The state sets the rental, um, calculations. We don't. There are other things the state puts on to the towns that, uh, have 40Bs in front of them that we are subject to adopting and moving forward with them. And at one time I did ask our representatives, the representative of town of Southborough, since we are in Worcester County, why are we not calculated with the Worcester County numbers? And they were going to look into that. That was 10 years ago. I continue to ask the same question. So what the rents are based on, we have no jurisdiction over those figures. And I've been involved with every single 40B in this town and reselling them. So I'm just looking for the opportunity here to provide additional housing, homes, apartments for families, for individuals my age that can move to, that has an elevator. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joyce Greenlee for North Street. I'm here as Chair of the Stewardship Committee. I'm sure you've received our letter. So just very briefly, because I understand you're, um, we've been talking a lot about the 6.2 acres tonight. And I would say the stewards appreciate the commitment and progress toward the 6.2 acres. and I would say the stewards appreciate the commitment and progress toward the 6.2 acres for donation and hope to collaborate on an acceptable layout for that land. But we do remain concerned, as you've heard from the other speakers tonight. The stewards are concerned about the sightlines from the conservation land. We're concerned about the light pollution and the adequacy of a buffer. Mr. Ferris mentioned in particular wanting to get some fast-growing plants in there. We're concerned about what might be planted. We have very specific goals involving plants and creating certain kinds of habitat with certain kinds of plants on the conservation land. So there can be an opportunity for us also to collaborate there. And we've provided resources of where appropriate plants can be identified. So those are things that are particularly concerned for us, especially given the points made about the 6.2 acres as it exists, denuded of trees, graded, et cetera. So the details are available in our letter, but I wanted to briefly highlight those points.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Probst, 31 Woodland Road. I'm one of the closest abutters to the conservation land and this particular development. I also represent a group of 41 families in Southborough known as Friends of Breckneck Hill. Our website is breckneckhill.org. And we are all residents of Southborough and abutters to the conservation, and then users of conservation. I'm not going to rehash anything that's already been said, but I just want to say thank you to the, the ZBA, as well as Ferris Development Corporation for your work in bringing more affordable housing to town. That's, we, we believe that's important. We also are appreciative of your efforts so far to work with the town on the donation, proper donation of the land, as well as make sure basically all of the conflicts. And we would appreciate continued work on the concern about the leach field. Anything could be done to move it a more way and provide more of a buffer of undisturbed vegetation and trees. That is greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we want to get to the agreeing on a continuation then. Sorry, what were we, you had.
To that point, to be clear, when I said November 20th, that was from the applicant's perspective, the deadline for final action.
For the closing of the hearing.
Closing, yeah.
No, no, I said, I said action, and from the applicant's perspective, it's action. That's what the applicant's willing to do on action, November 20th. So if it's a matter of closing the hearing, I think we, the applicant will agree to October 16th, which is the scheduled October meeting date.
To, to close.
To close the hearing, yes. And I see that in part because.
It's not going to be enough, but I mean, if we want to do this month after month after month, then, you know, fine.
Well, we've talked about the certain things needing to happen by year end, so we can back into it. If the donation is to occur by December 31st, we need there to be an appeal period to run, going in reverse chronological order. We need an appeal period to run, right? So everything's binding. We need action to have occurred, and we need the public hearing to have closed.
Mm-hmm.
So the applicant is not willing, sitting here tonight, to agree to extend the hearing to November 20th. It's October 16th.
So less than a month of an extension. I mean.
Four weeks.
No, no, from the current deadline.
Yeah. I don't know how that's sufficient.
I mean, we're, we're likely going to end up just doing this dance again, but, I mean, if that's, if that's what he's giving right now, then we'll do that now.
I'm a glass half-full kind of guy, and so I think I sat here three weeks ago tonight, and there was no willingness to extend the deadline for the hearing to close.
Right.
And I'm now able to tell you that the applicant's willing to do October 16th, four weeks beyond the prior deadline.
Right.
Progress.
And I, and Brian, that's fine. I'm just, I've done this a fair bit more than you have, and I can tell you that's probably not going to be done. If you came to us today and said you weren't extending beyond the 19th, we'd be denying the project.
Is my client.
I, listen, Dave, Dave has been a good guy tonight. I'm just telling you, if this is the extension you're giving, this is the extension we're going to get. We're going to be doing this again.
It does not matter how much long you or I have been doing this. The applicant, my client, is willing to do October 16th.
And that, that's what we'll do, and then everyone runs the risk of running into an artificial deadline.
Yeah, I'm not available October 16th.
That's just the deadline.
Yeah.
Right.
So if we continued to a date before that.
Yeah, I thought we were, we were talking about when we're going to continue the hearing until, right?
Well, I'm talking specifically about the deadline, the applicant's willingness to set the deadline for the public hearing to close, and that's October 16th, as of now. But in terms of the next hearing date, we'd love September 4th if the board is open to that.
We have a, we have a special meeting with Park Central.
We do.
I, this is David speaking. I just really want to make it clear to the board. My whole goal on setting dates is, is internal in how we work internally in our companies, which is if we don't have deadlines to get things done. I, I've told a lot of boards and different people in town, I'm trying to get this donation done by year end. And I can only do that if the appeal period and all the things lapse, which is why I'm just trying to set an agenda and a tempo. I'm not trying to back anybody into anything. I'm just trying to move this thing forward so that I can deliver on what I said, which is I'm really doing my best to get it done by year end. So that, that's really it, and we're all working in good faith to get it done. So it's sort of arbitrary at this point, anyway. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question, because I think I'm a little bit confused, is the 6.2 acres, are you saying that's tied to us approving the 40B?
Yeah, I'm saying that we, we fundamentally don't legally think we need to donate it, but I want to get the permit done. I want to get the approvals done so that we can transfer it at the same time we're getting our permits, so that we are all in good shape where we're releasing any claim to the land and you're setting an approval prior to year end, correct?
It, it would have to follow, notwithstanding my disagreement on what they have to do and don't have to do because they're willing to do it. When a decision comes down, if it comes down to approve this, one of those conditions will be for them to provide a final plan for endorsement and recording that will carve out the 6.2 acres, and at that point, it can be conveyed.
Right, and then for whatever reason we decide not to do that, the town would have to go other legal avenues to try and get that.
Yes.
Okay. And we're waiting for the final subdivision plan.
I think there is a subdivision plan in the recent plan set.
Yes.
For the, for our peer review engineer to look at in conjunction with the, the waivers.
Okay, I thought, I thought I heard someone comment say that it wasn't clearly delineated.
There was, there are concerns by the planning board, which we should be referring to our peer review engineer on difficulty in interpreting some of it, and also some details lacking.
Okay.
Is my understanding.
All right. Well, I, I, I would like to. You, you need to, you, the consultant. Okay. Two minutes.
Thank you.
Two-minute recess. Do you have the microphone? Okay, all right, we are back in session.
Just, Mr. Living.
Expediency, at least for the purposes of tonight, you know, subject to your availability, can we schedule the next meeting?
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Is it on? That's on, right?
Yeah.
Seems like it is, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Can we just move forward, trying to, you know, and appreciate the board's time tonight? But can we just schedule, subject to the convenience of the board, whether we're, when the next meeting is going to be?
Yes, that's what I was trying to get.
No, I know you weren't, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate that. And we were discussing September 4th, and that was kind of like up in the air for the moment.
I, well, because we have something already scheduled, but, but, I don't know. I feel like we should be able to do both of them on that night. I know Jamie, you won't be on that. You'll only be here for this. And Doug and Mike, any concerns with, with trying to do that on September 4th?
I can be here on September 4th. I just won't, I won't be part of Park Central.
Right.
Yeah. That'll be a fun night.
We like to package it all in one night, Mike, if possible.
So I'm good on September 4th.
Okay. I, and I, I, you're not wrong, Mike, but I, I am kind of feeling like we're, we're getting back into a corner a little bit here. Not saying somebody's doing it, I'm just saying the reality of dates and people not being available. I think we can do it. Now, the expectation would be, we have additional peer review to, to go through on September 4th, correct? I mean, that, I don't think that's an unreasonable assumption.
Yes.
Okay.
We owe the waivers list in the format that your peer reviewer wants.
Yep.
And we'll send in imminently any plan sheets in the septic design to the extent they're changed by pulling the septic system off the corner.
Okay, right.
That should be all the additional that the peer reviewer needs.
Okay, all right.
And then we've been told plus three or four business days.
Okay.
From that moment.
All right, and, and, but the other, the other piece here is, is, is the extension of the closure of the hearing. And you're, you're, you're saying we're, October 16th is the date for now. Is that correct?
For now, for now, yes.
For now.
But I think that can readily be a topic on September 4th.
Okay.
Above further.
Okay, right, I mean, I think Jay's right. We're, we'll probably be doing the dance again. But I, I do think in the, in the, in the spirit of trying to keep things moving forward, I mean, I think I understand the frustration. I would like to try to do this on September 4th unless.
Thank you.
Anybody else here has an issue with that. The only question is, do we really want to try to schedule it before seven? That would be, that might be challenging.
I mean, you could do it 6:30.
Let's just talk about that briefly. Mike and Doug, is that problematic?
No, I mean, it's going to be a barn burner, so I'd rather get, get in earlier and then, you know, pack a lunch and go from there.
Why don't we schedule them both for seven? I mean, Park Central, while it could involve some discussion, I don't think it's going to be particularly lengthy.
I don't think it's going to be either.
They're both at seven, however long it takes. We're just, we'll pick up the other one right after.
Okay.
Do we have any news on Park Central?
Nothing since the last meeting, but I don't want to discuss it at all tonight.
Yeah, I got it, I got it, I just.
Okay. So let's.
Early's time for me.
Early's, yeah, I could do six or 6:30.
Yeah, I'll make whatever work.
I, I'm going to suggest we do, we do 6:30.
6:30?
It's fine.
That'll work, that'll work for me.
Great.
That's great.
All right, so you agree we need to actually have a motion to continue the, the hearing until September 4th at 6:30 PM?
I make a motion to continue the hearing to September 4th at 6:30 PM.
That's a second.
All right, motion to continue to September 4th at 6:30 has been made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Opposed, nay. Jamie?
Aye.
Doris? Uh, Mike?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And William's aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other items on the agenda.
That was it.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your time.
Just need a motion to adjourn.
Ah, we do need that. We don't have Paul here.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting on August 21st, zoning board of appeals.
That is a second.
All right, motion has been made to adjourn and, and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Jamie?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
William's aye. All right, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.